Okay, good evening and welcome to the Canton Planning Commission for the 2nd of May. As usual, we'd like to begin with saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Commissioner Zubor, would you call the roll, please?
I thought you'd never ask. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Good evening.
Commissioner O'Conne is excused. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Here.
Commissioner Weber is excused. Commissioner Zubor is here. And Chairman Green?
Here. Okay, we have minutes from the April 4 meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept and approve those minutes?
I had one minor, I think, correction on, sorry, at the top of page three, in the very first paragraph that's full on that page, it says, "Mr. Weaver stated that the car wash would be open 362 days and the hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. annually." I think that he meant daily, or I think that's what he probably said.
Yeah, because why would that be?
I don't know. 7:00 a.m. on January 2nd. That's the only thing I saw. Other than that, I would make a motion, I will make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do I hear support?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor with one exception, and support by Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have approved the minutes. All right, next, we have, we have an agenda of two items that we have to deal with as far as projects, and then one on the commission. What I'm going to suggest, just so that we don't hold up people that are here for the, for the project meetings, that we move number one to number three. Is that fine with the commission?
Yes.
So that we can continue that, that discussion that we've been going on for, what, two months now?
You guys don't want to hear it. Two meetings, that's right.
All right, so we've moved number one to number three, and moved the other two up. Any, any other changes? Anything additional from staff on the agenda?
No changes.
Changes? Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the revised agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor to accept the revised agenda, and support by Commissioner Foster. Yes. Okay, so, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so. Let's talk about our first order of business, which is TNT Fireworks. They were considering seasonal sales permit, and we've done this before, property located south of Ford Road, east of Canton Center. We did this last, was it last year or two years ago? But it was on the other side of the parking lot at Meyer. Could you give us more detail on that, Patrick?
Sure, definitely. I'll bring us up here on the map. One more, there we go. So on the aerial map here on the site, around the northeast part of the parking lot is where the proposed tent will be. And in years past, either at the Planning Commission, or if you've been to Meyer, the tent was on the northwest part of the parking lot. Since then, the Culvers Restaurant has been developed, and that area has been made unavailable. And so the northeast part of the site is proposed by the applicant and made available by Meyer. In 20, I believe it was 2019, the tent was set up in the northwest part of the site before the Culvers project started. And, I have it wrong, I think 2020 was the last year it was in Meyer. Last year, in 2021, the TNT tent was actually in the Sam's Club parking lot on Ford Road, farther east. And then now that the, at that time, the Culvers site was under development, and also the west part of Meyer had a lot of storage there. So I think parking availability was limited at Meyer, and 2021 just was not a good year as a result. So now that the construction is finished, the trailers have been removed, the parking is back to where it should be according to the site plan. The TNT Fireworks applicant now wants to return to the Meyer site, albeit at a different location. We've reviewed the materials that are submitted by the applicant, and our recommendation is approval, subject to the issuance of the tent and sign permits from the Building and Inspection Services Division, and subject to the applicant providing the required fence details noted by staff. And those details were just the proper security of the fencing around the perimeter of the tent, and the applicant has methods to do that, to secure it. So on that end, we'll just defer to the Building and Inspection Services Division to make sure that the fence will be adequately secured. So that concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project representative here? If you want to come up and add to what Patrick has stated?
Good evening. Chuck Freeze with TNT Fireworks. The only minor detail, I would say, was, he's correct, last year we were at Sam's Club. We actually did in the year before, in that very similar spot on the east side of the parking lot. But then, yes, prior years, we had been on the west side. So we, we did have a successful season there before, but like you said, with the construction of Culvers, and it was just a mess. It was everything there last year, so we didn't even try. But yeah, here to answer any other questions, and, you know, we have someone on site keeping an eye on the products, and like you said, with fencing, and the way the state does do inspection as well, in terms of egress, there's three exits, and fire extinguishers, and lighting if, if, you know, it gets too late, that if there was a lack of power within the lighting of the tent for people to get out, they could see to get out of the fireworks tent for safety concerns. So, get a few.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here. I'm just going to open it up to the commission in general. Anybody have any comments or concerns? We've, we've granted things like this before. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have any issues. My, my question is, didn't we at the last meeting say, when we get these seasonal things coming every year, we're just going to automatically approve them? I was wondering why this was coming before us.
Well, it's a different location, though, right?
Yeah, that's a good question. This, the automatic renewal, that was originally approved in 2020, and that was done for Lowe's and Home Depot for their seasonal sales. But in 2020, that motion was not made for fireworks sales. So fireworks sales, as a separate classification of seasonal sales, would be required to come back year after year, unless the Planning Commission were to make a motion to not require them to come back year after year. But sometimes state standards may change, or other standards may change, that affect just fireworks uses and no other uses. So that was not done for fireworks the same it was done for, like, Lowe's and Home Depot.
My sense, though, is if something does change, then we can say to them, oh, something's changed, come on back.
Correct.
My, my feeling on that is, is just that change is the key thing, what we're dealing with here. Because when, when you were on the east side before, Meyer, the Meyer lot had more flexibility. So people could park over in the area that now is totally occupied by Culvers. Now that flexibility is gone. So my question is, you know, I know that you've already gotten permission from Meyer, from the Meyer organization, to do this, but my question is, is this efficient in terms of overall use of that parking lot from Meyer now that there is no flexibility on the west side of the, of the lot? Because I've been over there since Culvers has been built, and it's got a lot more use on that east side now. In fact, I park, I've parked over there many times, and it's a lot, lot busier now than it used to be.
Yeah, if, if someone comes in from Ford Road into the Meyer site, a lot of people's natural inclination will be to park in aisle that they're closest to when they enter, especially when they can see the door of the building, and they can see their pathway to the door, which is why you, you may see heavier traffic on, or heavier parking on the east side. But if you go more towards the middle, there's more spaces available, just because from the middle, you're farther from the road entrances, even though you're closer to the door. So that's a good point, where you could see some busier traffic, and that may result, long term, in a changed location in future years, depending on demands for parking and access.
Anyone else have any thoughts or concerns on that?
Five percent reduction. In my notes, I should have brought the cover paper. But yeah, overall, it's a minimal, it's about 12 to 14 spaces total. But I kind of went on that recommendation from the, the prior planner, it was Jeff, I believe, or someone. So he kind of steered me to that direction. I mean, if you would, maybe not this season, but maybe going forward, if you'd like us to kind of evaluate how that looks, we could definitely move back center, or even potentially closer to Culvers, if, if that would be something to consider.
Do you think that that would be a better location, to move more central in that, in that lot area?
I think anything really on the north side of the lot, where parking is, is not, the parking is not in high demand, sometimes it's difficult. More central, it's, it's less used, just because people don't come in from that way. But some of it is also determined by the areas Meyer wants to make available, too. So it's possible Meyer may have no issues with them being more central, but we wouldn't know until, you know, Meyer has, has signed off on a different area.
Yeah. Well, is anybody else in objection to this location, or just let it fly?
Let it fly.
Let's fly.
Okay. All right, then do I hear a motion?
I move to approve one 30-day seasonal sales permit for the TNT Fireworks Company, parcel number 058-99-0003-723, commencing on June 21st, 2022, as shown on the plans, and subject to obtaining appropriate permits and inspections from the Building and Inspection Services Division for the tent and signs, and subject to the applicant providing the required fence details noted by staff. Do we want to move that we can let staff decide these in the future if there's no changes?
I would agree with that myself. That's just my opinion. If there's no material changes in the, the location or the circumstances surrounding the location, then I would let staff do it.
I'm fine with that. Just my question on procedure, does it have to be a separate motion, or can it be within the same motion? Okay.
I can make a separate motion.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking it probably should be a separate motion.
Right. I support the first motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor, and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any further discussion on that motion? And this, that motion is simply the, the approval of TNT Fireworks and the, the stated location. No, no further?
No question.
Okay. Would you call the vote on that, Commissioner Zubor?
Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green. Did I call you?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger, I skip you all the time, don't I? I'm sorry.
Yes, and I'm a yes.
Okay.
So good luck to you, and don't, please don't sell to any of my neighbors. Anyway. My dogs don't love that.
Will I D them?
Yeah. I was going to suggest a second motion that, and I'm not sure how to word this, you had some good wording there, that we, for-
Well, okay, let me stop you for just one minute. This really pertains to any of our seasonal sales things that we go through, like with Home Depot, and Lowe's, and stuff like that, too?
Oh, we already did there.
Did we already do, so, so what was that, that general approval? But that was per store?
It didn't include the, uh-
The fireworks, right.
It was just for things like Home Depot and-
So what I was thinking was a, a-
A blanket-
Sure, for all seasonal sales permits, that if there's no material change from the year before, that staff could go ahead and approve that?
Yeah. I would make that motion.
I think material change, as well, as any new state legislation that affects the-
State legislation, or if they change locations in the lot, you know, they get bigger, you know, or even smaller.
Any change, basically.
Yeah, that, that would be a material change, as far as I'm concerned.
I would, I would make that motion.
Selling dynamite as opposed to just regular firecrackers, yeah.
I would support that motion.
All right.
Okay, so, how do you word that, then?
What'd you write down there, Patrick?
Well, not much yet.
Oh, okay. Well, how about if I take a stab? I move to approve, I move that staff can approve seasonal sales permits.
Renewals, seasonal sales.
Renewals for seasonal sales permits, thank you.
Unless there are significant changes.
Provided there are no material changes.
Provided there are no material changes, so hopefully that-
Automatic yearly renewals, basically. Staff can, staff can approve automatic yearly renewals.
Yeah, annual renewals. Thank you, yeah. Thank you.
I support that, however it ended up being.
Good thing we're videotaping this. Somebody's going to have to go through that.
It might, it might serve, in terms of the motion, too, to add some examples of material changes.
Ah, for example, a new location.
Including but not limited to-
Yeah.
Change in location, change in size.
Change in state law.
Change in duration.
Change in duration. Change in where they're putting their mulch.
Patrick, do those all make sense, and do you need to add any other possible changes?
I don't think so. I think material changes, we can include that. Like, this past year, we saw Home Deep, one of the Home Depots, because they added a wheelbarrow storage area that expanded it. The Lowe's on Ford Road used an alcove next to the building for some temporary plant storage. Those would definitely be material changes, and that's why they came back.
Right.
So, yeah, we can, we'll look at those when they come in next year, see what's a change, talk internally with staff to see if they're material enough to go to the Planning Commission. And because the Planning Commission meets every month, and usually these applications come in two or three months prior, you know, we can always be on the safe side and go to Planning Commission and not hold up, you know, their proposed start dates.
I think material changes, or any other changes with the staff, may be unfit to bring to our attention.
Oh, yeah, it would be, yeah, their discretion as to what, if, if it qualifies as a material change and needs to come before us.
Technically, even if there are complaints or, you know, objections to a particular, that, then again, it, it should be considered as a material change.
All right, so that's an official motion.
Support.
By Commissioner Zubor, and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Right? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Commissioner Eggenberger, yes. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger? Just kidding. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay, so now we've taken care of both things, and good luck to you, okay? Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Mini Storage Depot, where we're considering a site plan for property located south of Michigan Avenue, between Belleville and Beck Road. The proposed use there is a mini warehouse facility. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. This application was previously before the Planning Commission, I think in late, or no, early December, yeah, I think it was the December meeting of 2021. And the Mini Warehouse is a special land use in the Light Industrial Zoning District. And the Planning Commission recommended approval of the special land use, and the board approved the special land use on January 11th, 2022. After the special land use was granted, the applicants prepared a site plan for the Mini Storage Depot at the southwest, southeast corner of the intersection of Research Drive and Michigan Avenue. The site plan is mostly the same as what was provided at the special land use meetings, with more detail. The original special land use plan included more details than are typically seen on a special land use plan, but was good for reviewing it for project feasibility and scope. Because the plan is consistent with the special land use plan that was previously approved, staff's recommendation is approval of the site plan for the Mini Warehouse establishment on the subject parcel, including a modification to the parking requirement to allow nine parking spaces for the reasons stated in our staff report, subject to a few conditions that I'll get into in a moment. The parking is proposed at nine parking spaces, and based on the minimum standards of the ordinance, there are several more parking spaces required than nine. And the Planning Commission has discretion to lower the minimum, or the maximum and minimum amount of parking spaces. They can lower them up or down. In this case, in reviewing the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual, as well as aerial photo observations of other Mini Warehouse establishments, the parking demand for the establishments is far lower than the minimum required by the ordinance. So the ordinance standard promotes over-parking of the site. Based on the ITE analysis, as well as our visual observations of other Mini Warehouse uses in the township, we believe that nine parking spaces is sufficient for the use. We recommend two conditions with the site plan. The first condition is to provide a cross-access easement with Arctic Edge to the east to be reviewed and approved by Township Legal Council. And I'll pull up the site plan, and I'll show you the areas in question regarding that. So I think this aerial photo on their, on their plan illustrates that. At the special land use meetings, there was actually a second access from Research Drive, much closer to the primary access. And the reason was to have two means of emergency vehicle access, but they were proposed in tandem, side by side, as an alternative, and an alternative that appears to be an improvement. The applicant is proposing a cross-access easement to the east, which is a property that is used as Arctic Edge, and the owner is Canton Township. Both the, our, the Fire Department, the Engineering Division, and Planning Division have reviewed this, and all of our divisions recommend approval of the cross-access between these two sites. This would require a legal review by the township's legal council, and the township is in the process of contracting with outside legal council for a host of different legal needs, including planning and zoning. And so our new Township Legal Council will review this, review the cross-access, and provide us guidance on any kind of easement language and other legal things that need to happen for that cross-access to take place. The applicant is permitting it on their end. The other side of the line is subject to Township review, but there may be other parties involved that have to sign off on that as well. So our recommendation is subject to that cross-access agreement with Arctic Edge to be reviewed and approved by Township Legal Council. And if it is, we think that'll be an improved emergency access that will allow flow between the two adjacent sites. Our second condition that we recommend is to revise the plans in accordance with our staff comments for fence details, architecture, landscaping, mechanical equipment, signage, dumpster enclosure, and any of the remaining concerns from the Engineering Division. There are, there are a few there, but most of them are fairly minor, and minor corrections that have to be addressed on the plans before they're signed anyway. So we recommend that those get done, most of which we recommend getting done before they go to the Township Board, so that it goes to the Township Board much cleaner, and that those, those minor items get taken care of. But at this point, we feel they can be conditions prior to board review of the plans. So with that, that concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. As a project sponsor here?
Evening, I'm Andy Wasnick. I'm with Simon Wasnick, we're the civil engineers for the site. And I'm here to ask, answer any questions that you have.
All right, I'm going to start down on this end with Commissioner Watkins.
Thanks so much. Through the chair. Thank you, Mr. Wasnick, for being here. That cross-easement that's proposed on the backside, I'll call it the, on the south side of the lot, that empties, that'll, where it's proposed empties into the fire lane on the west side of Arctic Edge, am I right?
That's correct.
That lane doesn't, that, that's not used by the public, is it?
I'm not aware. Do you know that answer, Patrick?
If it's used by the public, it may be for access only.
I think that's only a fire lane, if, and shouldn't be used by the public, if I'm not mistaken. The only reason why I know is because my kids have soccer there, and, I mean, excuse me, not soccer there. The hockey happens there, and, and the physical therapist is there, and I know that, that east, excuse me, that west side is clearly marked as fire access only.
Clearly, there's no parking back there.
There is no parking back there, and I just wanted to make sure that that works for access.
Yeah, I think that is a, I think that is a fire lane. Definitely no parking there. There's no marked parking or, or anything like that. So there may be access from north to south, but anything that's there should be moving.
Got it. And then, and then just wanted to be aware of that. And the second thing is, I looked at signage height, and signage at the top of the building, I don't know if that's, that's illuminated or not, but I'm assuming that'll be, that'll be vetted in, in site plan review process.
Yeah, for, for signage, the Building and Inspection Services Division, they review sign permit applications. So the illumination, they'll review that. But what we like to do during the site plan review is to review those zoning standards early, so that by the time they go into Building Division, dimensionally, things should, things should work, and that the signs that the Planning Commission is reviewing are signs that comply with our ordinance. But some of the things like illumination, and electrical hookup, and things like that, Building Division will review when they review the permits.
And just curious, last thing, through the chair, I didn't see the placement of that ground sign. I did see the example of it, but I didn't see where it would be placed on the site.
It's up on one of the plans. It's, 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 yeah.
I think I'm missing it.
Take you back.
Right there, right by, yeah.
Got it, all right, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Zubor?
Um, I don't have any questions. I don't see any problems with this.
Commissioner Foster?
I don't have any issues with it.
Commissioner Charia?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Singh?
I just have a couple of questions. These are, I'm sure, very simple answers. I notice on, on one site drawing there, it says dumpster for staff access only.
Correct.
Is that, there's nothing there for the renters?
No.
To, to access, so if they have something to throw away, they just have to take it with them?
They have to take it on their own, yeah.
Take it on their own. Okay, so then the other big question I have, getting back to fire access. I notice on the south side, or the north side, there's another 20-foot fire access road.
Correct.
Okay, so how does that play? Because it doesn't go all the way to Michigan, so it doesn't, it, it, there, there's no access for the Fire Department to, to get to that.
If your, if a road's less than 150 feet, a fire access can back into that space. So that is just so they could use a fire apparatus next to the building, on that side of the building, and fight the fire from there.
Yeah, so, okay, so parking, parking is there. I think that was all the questions that I had. Oh, one other thing, and this could be just a typo. I notice on the site drawings, you've got the five, five-foot wide sidewalk on Michigan Avenue side.
Okay.
But in your legend, on the, one of the sheets there, the paving and dimension plan, it shows four-foot sidewalks listed.
That will be a five-foot sidewalk.
It should be five feet, because I think that's ordinance.
If it says four foot, it's a typo.
Yeah, okay. I think that's all that I had. Yep. Anybody have anything else? Nothing? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I have a motion. I move to recommend approval of the site plan for a Mini Warehouse establishment use on parcel number 131-02-0015-000, including a modification of the parking requirements of Section 401(c)(6) to allow nine parking spaces, as the request meets the site plan criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance, subject to the following items being satisfied prior to the Township Board action on the site plan. prior to the township board action on the site plan. One, provide cross-access agreement with the Arctic Edge site to be reviewed and approved by Township Legal Counsel. And two, revise the plans in accordance with staff comments for fence details, architecture, landscaping, mechanical equipment, signage, dumpster enclosure, and any remaining comments from the engineering services division. Support.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Eggenberger. Any further discussion on this project? Hearing none, scene none. Commissioner Uber, would you call the vote on this, please?
Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Okay. What is now our third agenda item is old business of dealing with bylaws for the commission. I will start out by saying that we've dealt with this now for a couple of months, and we need to put this to bed. And I will say this, you know, when I, when I first joined the commission, I did have to attend a class. Now, they didn't, they didn't say, well, it's mandatory, but it was kind of like, well, this is good for you, because, you know, you've never done this before. So, I went through, I went through a special thing, I believe it was in association with Michigan State University, which I did, you know, a lot, and I learned a lot, and I appreciated that. Back then, with Vic Gustafson, I believe was the chair, and we did have some group sessions through a Michigan State program a couple of times, but we just kind of fell away from the extra learning and stuff. I thought they were, it was good, and so I think this, while it may seem, it might be something, because it's thrown at us, it might seem like it's punitive. I, I, I think that some measure of continual education for us is good. I don't think that there's any one of us that knows everything, you know, about planning or about, you know, the growth of communities, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I like the compromise going from six hours to four. I think four is doable, quite honestly. There's different ways of achieving that. And then, you know, the other caveat of if you miss one year of doing the four, you, as long as you've got 12 in, in the three years, you're fine. But again, it, it should not be viewed as one of those things where, oh, well, they're making me do this. It should be something that we, we really want to do anyway. I think all of us as professionals in our own professions have appreciated even repetitive stuff that we already knew, just enforcing the fact that we knew that. But we always generally, when I was an insurance agent, I, I, there were times when it was like, geez, I really have to do this continuing education thing. But then, I always picked up on something that I, that I learned from, from going through that, that motion. So, with that said, that's just my opinion, and I'm here to welcome anybody else's opinion on this. Any thoughts?
I agree with you that I think this is something we should be doing and should want to do, and, and I guess in my mind, we would all be doing it anyway. I know I've signed up for that crazy long thing that, Patrick, because I want to make sure I know what I'm doing. In my mind, I don't think they should put people on this commission that aren't interested in learning about what they want to do, but does that mean it needs to be required? I guess my thought is, I, I don't think I need to be told to do this, because I think it's important, and so I will. That said, I'm, I'll vote for this the way it is and, you know, move forward, but I think that, that certainly has been my frustration with it, instead of just saying, well, yeah, we put you guys on this commission, because we expect you to want to do this.
I think, you know, just bouncing off of what you said, I think the requirement aspect is what, what had us all floored in the beginning, because it was, you know, thrown at us in, in that way, and this is a volunteer type of, type of thing that we're doing here. So, we're going, whoa, wait a minute, requirement, a volunteer? I think maybe, maybe that's an out for the township that, heaven forbid, a commissioner has chosen and is just totally rebellious, and you need a way of saying, hey, you didn't even comply with the minimum requirements here, you know, you gotta go, kind of thing. I don't see that happening, because I, everybody I've served with on this day has, has just been top-notch and top-quality. So, you know, I don't, I don't see that as a, as a thing, but I, I do understand the necessity for having some minimums there that, you know, kind of like indicate person's desires, particularly now that we're talking about attendance and stuff, because, you know, some, who knows, somebody may want to be on here just to put it on a resume, but then not show up to a lot of the meetings. And if we don't have people that show up, we're not doing Canton justice, because we need the minds of, of this body to, 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 you know, be the referral source for the trustees to go forward and do what they do. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the requirement aspect of it, because I think anybody who really cares about this and what they're doing, I think they'll comply with the four hours easily, quite honestly. I don't, I don't think it'll be a, a thing that, that's hard to do. There's a lot of ways to accomplish it, and, and the staff has come up with a lot of them, you know, options, don't even have to, you know, go anywhere in a lot of instances, but just do a Zoom type of thing and, and be done with it. So, Patrick, in order for us to more formalize the amendment to the bylaws, do we have to, to make a motion, or how, how is that? Is there a motion there already worded?
Can we discuss it a little more? Or do we, do the rest of us get a chance?
Let's discuss the motion.
I, I, I'm the one who has the issue with the, the hours, and, and I don't have an issue with doing it. I have an issue with how many hours are required, and the fact that it was just thrown at us and not discussed with us or anything. We weren't part of drafting these even. I, I still don't really love four hours. I, I still think it's a lot of time when we're brought together for, you know, 12 meetings a year, it may be two hours average at the high side. You know, we're, then we're required another four hours over and above that. I would be happy with two. I, I do, I did the, I did the training when I first joined as well. I think I did it when I joined the ZBA, and I, I have, I have done it since. But I, my concern is, again, it's, it's the amount of time we're being asked. I appreciate that we're able to push it over our term instead of each year minimum, but I still, I, I still object to four hours.
So, you would, you would okay, you would be okay with two per year and, and six in a three-year term? Any other thoughts?
It's a lot of time.
I, I will say, I like the idea of requiring training. When we do interview applicants for Planning Commission, we do ask them if they would be interested in doing the continuing education. And I think that is part, that is important, because this commission, the decisions that we make could be subject, subject to legal penalties if they aren't followed to the letter of the law. So, I think, you know, having it required is a good thing. I will say, I think it is important to brush up on the skills every year, and whether we're able to do that, you know, four, four hours in one year, 12 hours over three years, that's fine with me. I do think four hours may be a lot for some people, depending on what they have going on in their lives. So, I don't know if there's any flexibility that we can, that we can institute there. But, yeah, I do think doing the education is important for people that sit on this, on this commission especially.
Mr. Chairman. Through the chair to Patrick, I just, I want to be clear on, and I understand both sides, on what exactly we're counting. There are two levels of being able to count these hours. One is I heard Madam Trustee say CEUs. We all know what a CEU is. That's a continuing education unit. But then we're talking about hours, right? That's just hours devoted to training. Patrick, through the chair, are we talking about CEUs where one CEU is equivalent to 10 hours of training? I believe that's the standard. So, four CEUs is about 40 hours of training. Are we talking about just hours of training? Or are we talking about CEUs?
Just hours of training.
Just hours of training. Okay. I just want to be clear for, for my own, so that I can make decisions about what I think is fair or not. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Any other, yes. Commissioner Singh?
So, Patrick, when did we stop training the new planning commissioners as Mr. Chairman and others who initially joined? They were, you know, given that opportunity to go and get a class or train. So, when did we stop doing that?
Quite a while ago.
Yeah, that I don't know, because I, I'm relatively new in the sense that I started working with the township three years ago, so I don't know when, when the last time that was, that was done. I know with, you know, currently as, as the division is more fully staffed and we're looking at different things that we want to, we want to try to stay on top of on a continual basis, on, on a number of things, such as like when we send out a monthly report and, you know, things of that nature. And one of the things that we had looked at before even looking at the bylaws is to try to find continuing education training opportunities to send to planning commissioners as, you know, here's something that's either free or something the township may otherwise cover, or something that may interest certain planning commissioners. We want to try to forward those on just as, as opportunities and, you know, take them as they go if, if they're of interest. So, the MSU extension training, for example, that we sent out a few weeks ago, that was something where we're, we're looking at, it, it is a large commitment for those who want to do it, but it's a good way to, like the introductory training some of you were mentioning when you first started with the planning commission of doing the MSU extension training, that's, that's kind of the, that's the primary course. It's kind of like the gold standard for not just new planning commissioners, there are a lot of experienced planning commissioners that take it as well, just as a refresher. Sometimes new things come up. So, so we're kind of excited about some of the, some of the things that are out there. There's a lot more free training out there that I've seen just as a professional planner that I've been taking just out of interest than I've seen at any other time. And I think part of it is maybe with COVID, so much has gone virtual, that there, there's a lot more that's going on where virtual does, it does have its benefits. So, so that's something we'll, we'll continue to pass along as, as we go, in addition to some of the intro or new member training like MSU extension and anything offered by MAP. And there is an item here in the bylaws that there is a new member orientation, and that is something that is, it's as much a responsibility on staff as it is for the planning commissioner, because when there are new members appointed, planning staff should, will be reaching out and encouraging new members to do the MSU training and to get them started on that, because we don't expect new planning commissioners to come in on day one and have that, all that background. There'll be introductory training like some of you had mentioned that you had when you started.
So, I have a recommendation. So, when, when new members come in, we should require them, as suggested in this new bylaws, to go through this MSU training or any other training, which may be necessary for them to know what they're doing here. Once they have taken that training and yearly continuing education after that, two hours may be enough. Once you have, you can require more for the new member who are coming in, and then two hours minimum, or if somebody wants to spend more time, it should be his own wish or will that they can. So, you can just say that the fresh member will go through 12 hours of training in the first year. I mean, if you really want to be a planning commissioner, you should be willing to accept that. You want to know, I mean, I think even 12 hours will be less to really, you know, be prepared to know all this, what we do here. I mean, I, I can say that myself. Being here, you know, on these meetings without any formal education, I don't know if 12 hours are going to be enough for me to know everything what we do here. So, I think in the beginning, it should be a lot more for a new planning commissioner to get on the panel.
You know, and you don't, but you don't want to scare people off from being, you know, you know, to volunteer to be, to be here. Commissioner Uber, you had a point, and I have, I'd like to make one.
Yeah, I think, you know, as, as our, our resident trustee said, you know, the, the legal implications of what we do are important, but the continuing ed doesn't require any specific amount of, it doesn't require that we take any classes in legal points. You can take a class about daylighting in, in urban spaces, I'm sure, and that would count, right? Because we're not putting any kind of limitation on what kind of classes you need to take. So, if, if it's important, and I also, we have legal counsel to help us make decisions and, and advise us, but if there's specific things like legal points that we need to understand, then I think it might make sense for us to bring somebody in to talk about those things as part of our requirement. But if we're going to just require four hours of training with no, I still say four is a lot. I still think it's too much. But, so I guess my point is, is twofold. One is I think we're, that, that four hours is too many, but secondly, if we want specific classes on specific things, then that should be something that, that we're, that is brought to us.
Here's, here's my thought process on this. We all serve up here, with the exception of, of the trustee representative. We all serve up here at the pleasure and approval of the supervisor and the trustees. They need to know that the people that are chosen to be up here want to be up here and, and are willing to, you know, put in ample time to do this. I think we might be caught up in the semantics of two, four, six, and really what we're really after is the desire to learn and to improve, really. And so, that could be two hours, that could be four hours, that could be six, it could be 10 hours. The person that's doing that is the one that's going to, you know, benefit, and then we all benefit in, in, in return for that. So, what I'm thinking is, you want something where there's a minimum, okay? But you're not really saying, well, you have to have this amount. You, you, the minimum of two hours is nothing, you know, when it comes to actual hours, okay? And I'm glad Commissioner Watkins brought up that distinction. So, we're, we're talking actual hours. So, I'm, I'm thinking that it would make people feel comfortable, the fact that it's a, a thing there that says a commissioner can't continue to be a commissioner unless they're at least trying to improve from time to time, and the two-hour minimum would establish that. If you can't do that, then it kind of sends a message to the rest of the commissioners and the trustees that, well, that, that commissioner really doesn't want to do this anymore. And so, I, I would be willing to put the two hours in there as a minimum. And the recommendation from the, from the trustee body and from the, from the other commissioners that, hey, we all need to, to just do a little more from time to time. And, and I'm sure planning staff's going to keep presenting us with opportunities to learn more, because I think that's, that's part of it too, is, is, you know, having more thrown at us as an opportunity will get us way beyond two hours, because if you really have a desire to learn something, you're going to take advantage of some of those opportunities, and it's, two hours is, is not going to be an issue at all.
I'd like us to amend it to two hours, and then perhaps we can have a motion to vote on it?
Amend to two, to two hours with a total of six hours required per term.
Per term.
Yep.
I would support that.
Chairman Gregg, I, I just have a point to make, and when we were appointed commissioners, personally, I feel that if there was an orientation or training that was provided, I would have not, you know, I spent, I would have been a lot more productive, because I didn't come from a background of planning. But not all commissioners come from equal backgrounds, you know?
Right.
There's an unequal background.
Exactly.
So, I think at some point of time, we have to give, give due credit to the fact that there's a, somebody might have an architectural background and... that there's a, somebody might have an architectural background and, you know, or, you know, something in planning in the past. And if there is a process where, you know, there could be self-undertaking of the fact that, you know, I have this background, maybe we could give that, give the four hours a pass or, you know, a lower degree of minimum requirement. But on, I think education is important, and it's, it's better if it's at the start because, you know, right now, I've spent probably a couple of years, and, you know, first eight to nine months, we're just trying to understand the terminologies and understanding the process. And then you remain quiet. Because, you know, not because you're not smart enough, because you just don't understand the process. And you don't have the time to self-learn because we have day jobs and then, you know, you don't find the time. So I think at, at the onset, when somebody is appointed a commissioner, it should almost be mandatory that somebody undergoes education, you know, two hours or whatever is.
Well, I think, and, and along with that, I think orientation of a new member should be, there should be a requirement to either come to, you know, one or two planning commission meetings, or at least watching it on TV and, you know, being able to see how it flows, how it works with staff, et cetera, et cetera. There is certain things like that that I think can, can be, be tuned in. As for those who are on the commission, I think it behooves all of us to examine, you know, hey, can I do this one? Oh, I think I'm gonna have to skip that one, or, you know, so on and so forth. Be looking for opportunities to improve ourselves and improve what we do up here because it's for the community.
Absolutely.
And, and if that spirit is not there, then obviously the commissioner should probably step down, you know, in terms of, of that. So that's why I say, you know, if, if you have a minimum of two, if, if you don't meet that, that kind of says to the trustees, the person that, that was chosen is just not serious about doing this. Beyond that, the opportunities presented to us by the Planning Department, I think will take care of the hours. I really do. Because I think, you know, even though you might have a busy professional here, she's going to find time for one or two of the opportunities to take advantage of them, simply because she wants to. And like I said, if the minimum is there of two, I think that takes care of any problems with someone who just wanted to be up here and name only.
Patrick, for the Michigan Township Association Training on Planning, can you remind me how long that, how long that is? How many hours?
Well, they-
Isn't it like a full day?
Yeah, Summer, when I did it, it was a full day, open lancing. So that's easily, you've got that six hours right there.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Atariah that it makes sense to do a bulk of the training at the beginning of a term, and then, you know, do small increments every year just to stay on top of your game. But I agree that the bulk of it should happen at the beginning of a term. So the person that's sitting in these chairs is more prepared to do the work. So I don't know if we could structure something that way.
Doesn't, isn't, there's a requirement in the bylaws that any new member has to complete training within six months. So that might be, that's, yeah, it's already there. Yeah, it's right, it's, it's on page two, item C.
Yeah, so that would be, the way that it's, it's written in is any new member that's appointed after the bylaws are adopted. So it's not retroactive, even though for newer planning commissioners, I know, I think you've all expressed an interest in doing the MSU Extension Training. So, you know, that will, you know, that, that will certainly apply to, to the current terms as well as the current year. And, and that is something where with new member training, it's, planning staff has to coordinate with planning commissioners on that. Same as reference materials and continuing education opportunities where there's, there's a lot of requirements for township staff to make sure that we're presenting those training opportunities to planning commissioners and making you aware of what's out there.
Okay, so-
Do we have a motion, maybe?
Well, that motion that's here, okay, is it, is it modifiable? Is that-
Yeah, I think we can just say, in, in the Community Planner's Recommendation, it says, subject to any changes made by the Planning Commission. So we can, we can put that in the motion.
Oh, they anticipated that we weren't gonna agree that.
So I think we could just put that in the, you know, pursuant, you know, adopt the Planning Commission bylaws pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act with the amendment of changing the required education hours to two hours per year, six per term.
Support.
We, in that initial requirement for the training, is there, is there any hours mentioned or any particular training mentioned for the new members?
The training is mentioned, but the hours are not.
Something specific about that also, like what, what is that requirement?
My sense is it would be Patrick would say, you're new, you should go do this six-hour thing.
Yeah, do you really feel it's necessary to have that?
He'd probably say it a lot nicer than that, though.
You're new.
I, I feel like, I feel like numbers like that are like a baseball bat to beat over somebody's head. And that's not what we're about. You know, we're, we're not looking for that. So you don't wanna scare, to me, if I'm new to this and you tell me I've got a mandatory meet this, meet that, so on and so forth, I'm gonna go, whoa, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm not sure I can, I can do all. We want, we want willing volunteers to bring their experience and expertise from whatever area they're, they're, and to, to this. Because what I have learned over the years is that people bring different things to the table based upon their profession, based upon, you know, what previous things that they, they have experienced themselves. And, and I've learned from that. So we don't wanna, we don't want people to feel like, well, I've gotta be a, a professional engineer or, or an architect, or, you know, I've gotta have this, go through these classes. We don't want that. I mean, that, I don't think that that does this, this body any good. You know, I think, I think it's, it's great that we have an architect, and I, and I love the fact that she's here and willing to give her expertise to, you know, when we need, need that advice. But I don't think that's absolutely necessary.
We are saying that the new member is gonna go through their training, so, but without any specific specifications, like what training? What, what is this new member gonna go through?
Well, when-
There is a special one at MSU that's for new planning commissioners.
Are we requiring that, then, that MSU Extension Training for the new members? The bylaws?
It's not working, yeah.
This one is a, it's a little bit more open-ended because the MSU Training is a, is a pretty big commitment in terms of the number of hours and the number of modules. That's something that would be more voluntary just because of the commitment where there would be more hours in that particular program than there would be for the entire term. So what I would, what I would suggest for this is that if someone is really tight on time within that six months, I would probably recommend a class called Planning and Zoning Essentials. It's through the Michigan Association of Planning. And I think it's about a three-to-five-hour program. I'm, I'm trying to think of how long it has been the last time. That's a training that I've actually presented before myself as a, as a certified training, trainer through MAP. And I've, I've trained that program all over the state. I think if we were tight on time or tight on availability, we could potentially just schedule a training one night at the township. And I could coordinate with MAP to, to give the training. We would probably pay MAP for the curriculum, but I'm a certified trainer through MAP. That's something I could do, and it could do it in probably three to five hours, which is much on the lower end. But it's a pretty comprehensive program and something that can be, that can be achieved within that timeframe. And they have printed materials and references and things like that. So there is a shorter planning and zoning curriculum that's out there that's really good.
Does the, does the Planning Department have any kind of budget for bringing in expertise like that? Let's say to, to an environment here, a special meeting for us, for example? And maybe even the trustees could, could be involved in that, a joint meeting type of situation with a, an expert, somebody in, in a certain field that is deemed necessary to, to kind of learn from. Do we have anything like that in the, in the township budget for that?
There's a training budget, but I don't know if it's specific to, like, plant, this is for planning, this is for-
Because I'm, I'm thinking that might be something that we could utilize very easily to get people, because we all know how to get here. And, you know, if we could coordinate a meeting date for a joint, a joint session, you know, because I know some of the trustees are gonna wanna be involved, too. That, what might be a good thing to do.
This sound like all some great ideas to discuss, but perhaps we should vote on the bylaws and then have other discussions about ways we can get it done with the training.
Support.
What, what do you think? You think, are you ready to vote on this?
Yeah, sure.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor for two hours minimum. And that was presented by Commissioner Zubor, and it was supported by Commissioner Egenberger.
Actually, the other way around.
Oh, it's the other way around? Okay, it was, this-
I don't think she meant to make a motion, but I supported it anyway.
Okay, all right. So-
She was suggesting motion language.
The motion is by Commissioner Egenberger and supported by Commissioner Zubor. Any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
I finished my doodle first. Yes. Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Oak, oh, Ken's not here. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay. So now we have this before, so now we can discuss if you want to, or we can adjourn, you know, go through the rest of our agenda tonight, for tonight, and keep this for the future.
Yep.
Let's go through our agenda and review the questions.
All right. We'll go through the agenda. Let us do that right now. Okay, so we've got some business to refer to staff. Three projects? Five projects? Wow, okay. And I have, I have some questions on the, on the one, the BJ's one. But do I hear a motion to refer these five items to staff?
So moved.
Support.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Okay. We also have a public hearing to set for June 6. Oh, no, we don't. We don't have anything. Ooh, how about that? All right, well, I guess that's all, all we can vote on tonight. So did you wanna continue the discussion on how we can accomplish these things, or just leave it up to staff?
Yeah, I think we can leave it up to staff.
Okay, all right.
And there is a budget, and the Planning Commission has a budget in the township budget, and there are funds there for training, so.
Because I know that that has been good in the past, to have a joint meeting, have it right here in the room, and then have, and have an expertise come and, and talk to, to all of us, all at once. Since, since what we do is we send it, you know, most things, to the trustees, you know, they, they have the same issues, you know, that we have, except that, you know, they're kind of relying on us to, to kind of go through it first. But we all have a stake in it. So I think that's a, that's a good way to do it, you know. And plus, you know, there's a, there's some value in the camaraderie of, you know, seeing faces and just being here to help, you know, move Canton forward.
I will mention that a number of the trustees, I can't remember how many, Patrick, but indicated interest in participating in the MSU Training.
Yeah, there were, there were several.
There could be others, other department people in the township that might be, you know, interested in doing this as well. So it might be a money well-spent to have an expert come in, depending on, you know, what they're, what they're talking about, to do that. I know I'd be willing to, to, to sit for that and be a participant.
The Planning and Zoning Essentials might be a good idea if Patrick can conduct it himself.
That would be another one, yep.
That would be a great beginning to the whole program.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that, for sure.
I know that puts a more burden on, on you and Aaron to, to get that done. But I, I think that's exciting, you know, to, to, I think, one of your questions, when did we stop? I, I gotta tell you, I can't, I don't have a handle on it, quite honestly, because in my early years here, we did do stuff periodically. And it was never done, you know, with a, a mallet, you know, beating the overhead, said, you gotta do this, gotta do that. It's just that, you know, it was there, and then we wanted to do it unless we had a conflict or something. And then it wasn't there anymore. And nobody ever thought anything of it. And we had new commissioners and, you know, so on and so forth. You know, so I just never thought of it until, till this was brought up several months ago, that, you know, this would be a good thing for us, you know. So if we get the details down, which we have done, now we can go forward and be a little bit smarter about it. With that, oh, I do have a question about BJ's. So where would they possibly put a gas station?
Well, the, go ahead.
Well, without utilizing a lot of parking, that is, I think is gonna be crucial for them.
Yeah, they, the area that they're proposing, it's the, the vacant wooded area just north of Fifth Third Bank, west of Target.
It is that one. Okay, right behind the bank?
That's correct. One of the questions that we have for the applicant is, within that entire planned development district, there's a minimum 25% open space requirement. And so we, we're looking for verification that that is not allocated open space anywhere else. I think it's, it's probably not allocated as open space, but we're waiting on those calculations to make sure that it's an eligible application. And we have some other questions about the application itself. When the application is complete, it will be scheduled for a public hearing before the Planning Commission because it is a proposed PD amendment. Earlier, when we had the set public hearing for June 6, this was not on it because at this time, it's not ready to be scheduled for a public hearing. There's still some information that needs to be provided before this can move for the Planning Commission's review. But it's a, proposed as a fueling station for BJ's members only. And it would just be fueling and no convenience store, anything like that. So-
So, so what you're looking at, then, is the original PDD for that area, and I don't recall how that went down. Was that, you know, part of, part of the Target project? Was it part of the, the Pennies project? Was it part of Lowe's? I don't remember, you know, somebody's gonna have to go back in time and, and see whether that parcel you're talking about is part of the open space. I think it is, quite honestly.
Part of the PD is Lowe's, JC Penney, and Fifth Third, and that, that vacant piece north of Fifth Third. Those were all part of the original Ford Sheldon Newman PD. And over time, the PD's been amended to, to add things, to change things. So, you know, some of it-
So, so, well, let me get this right, then. So if, if that area was part of the open space requirement, the 25%, it's untouchable, right?
Well, yeah, 25% of the PD has to be open space. So they would have to demonstrate that, that there's 25% either within the entire PD, or each individual site has its own 25%. Like Lowe's has 25%, JC Penney slash BJ says 25%, Fifth Third has 25%.
Not that many 25% left in there, in that whole place.
Well, that's, that's information that we, we need to see to make sure it's even eligible.
Yeah.
As changes have been made, I know it's retained 25% throughout. But now we're looking at reducing that 25% wherever it comes from, or reducing that open space wherever it comes from. And we just have to make sure that we're still retaining the 25% because that's one of the major questions that's gonna come up.
All right, I just, I was, when I saw that application, I thought, where, oh, no, not that, not that, that grassy wooded area that's, that's behind the bank. Okay, that was the only question I have. Any further discussion items? So we can go? Any, any-
Move to adjourn.
I was gonna say, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All right, we got a motion to adjourn and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.